Call the meeting to order then, and we'll have roll call, please.
Commissioner Wright?
Here.
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 Kidd?
Here.
Dressler?
Here.
Bosb?
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And if I'd like to have a motion to approve an excused absence for Commissioner Ospey?
I'll move.
Second?
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye, unanimous? Okay, thank you. We stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Wrath to, he asked for, okay, also then to include Wrath for the excused absence. Thank you. Okay. I pledge allegiance-
To the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, may I have an approval for the agenda, please? Is there a motion to approve-
I'm wanting to approve the agenda.
Second?
I'll second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye, unanimous? Okay. Are there any conflict of interests? I see none. I'll move to correspondence. Is there any correspondence still?
No, thank you.
Okay. I can't see in the audience, do we, for introductions, are there council members or anyone there that should be recognized?
Former Councilmember Sean Gibberson is present. And former Councilmember Ruth Musser Lopez.
Great. Okay, thank you, welcome. Thanks for coming. As a courtesy to those in attendance, we would ask that the cell phones be turned off or set in their silent mode. Thank you. Public appearance. Persons wishing to address the commissioners on subjects other than those scheduled are requested to do so at this time. When addressing the commissioners, please come to the podium and give your name and address for the record. In order to conduct a timely meeting, a three-minute time limit per person has been established by municipal code section 2-18. Amendments to California Government Code section 54950 prohibit the commission from taking action on a specific item until it appears on the agenda. Is there any public appearance? Please come up and state your name and address.
There, we- Anything other than what's on the yes?
Yes.
Okay, okay, so we could just be honest during the hearing. Correct, okay, yeah, you'll have time to comment during this, no betting session.
So, so no one that has something-
Yes, we do check it, there is one member.
All right, thank you.
Hi, I'm Gail Brodbeck, and-
Can I speak into the microphone?
I'm Gail Brodbeck, I'm representing, representing Needles Elk Lodge. We are requesting that our zone at the Elk's Lodge be changed from a residential three to a public facilities zoning. We are now in trying to put up a deal with tri-state Wi-Fi, and we have plenty of room for an 80-foot tower, but we cannot have that done with a R3 zoning. I don't know why the Elk's Lodge has an R3 zoning. That's, that's what we're requesting.
All right, thank you very much. Any other public comment?
Hi, I'm Ruth Musser Lopez, and I appreciate the request for a change in zoning prior to the planning hearing, because I would also like to request a change in zoning for the property at-
Well, first of all, I, hold on, Ruth, I'm going to interrupt you just a second, because this is for requests or comments other than the zoning or the discussion that's already on the, the, the planning?
That's correct, and she just, she just did talk about a request for a change in zoning. So I'm going to request a change in zoning too, an existing zoning now, because that general plan hasn't been approved yet. I don't know why you interrupt me, Linda Kidd. Why do you do that? This is my time. I want my time back. Can I finish, please? Can I finish what I was going to say? It's a public hearing, I mean, it's my time for public comment.
Also, and, and you're correct, I should have also-
Excuse me, Laura.
Because it was also, these, this is for comments on items that are not on the agenda.
That's correct, and this is not on the agenda, just as hers was not on the agenda, because she's requesting a change in zoning.
You can finish your comment, Ruth, but I'm not giving your time back.
Oh, you are really sweet. What a grump. Okay. I'm requesting changes zoning for a property that's next to, that's Pioneer Cemetery, and it should be zoned a public facilities. It shouldn't be zoned for residential currently or non-use currently, it should be zoned public facilities. And the property next to it, which is a house that's zoned in residential at number one Grandview, otherwise known as 417 F Street, it should also be changed zoning for public facilities too, because it is proposed for a museum to be the gateway to the Pioneer Cemetery. I appreciate your consideration for this, whether or not the general plan passes or not. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other appearances for items that are not listed in the regular agenda? If not, I'll move then to the, go on to number one, the public hearing notice. I'm so, oh, there's one more? Okay, I can't see from this angle, so thank you. Come up and state your name and address, please.
Hello, Jerry Tayes, 1709 Coronado Street, Needles. Hey, I'd just like to say that I think it's a very good undertaking here to, to change some things up here in Needles. For so long, you know, we've had a, a number of people, investors, buyers, whatever you want to call them, come to town, and because of the current zoning, these, these investors weren't able to do what they intended to do, and it created a, a little barrier with time, zone changing, and that sort of thing. So I think we're on the right track here. We really need to increase the number of housing units here in Needles, and this, this may be a step in that direction, you know? So I just want to commend you guys for getting on the right track here.
Thank you, Jerry. Okay, any others? If not, publicly carrying notice to consider all evidence and testimony for or against approval of the updated City of Needles General Plan land use and transportation elements and adopt a mitigated negative declaration has been continued to the February 15, 23 meeting. The regular item, the general plan study session amending the city code and land use map associated with the general plan update and adoption of a mitigated negative declaration. This is the initial study. It's open for discussion.
Yes.
Patrick, yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, Madam Chair, good evening, and honorable, honorable Chair and members of the Planning Commission, good evening. I want to thank you all for, for having us here today, so we've, this is something that's been going on since March 4th of 2020, when the city received our congratulatory letter from the Department of Housing Community Development to start our revamp of our land use element. And as you know, I mean, we even started before that. We've been working on trying to get this general plan updated for quite some time, and we all know it came down to funding. When I went out to RFP, right when I got to the city in 2018, it was a million dollars just to redo our general fund. And so money really was being a barrier to be, us getting to where we need to go. So I just want to congratulate my staff and thank you all, and Placeworks, who you're going to hear from today, and really what I'm doing is introducing them. So Placeworks in 2020 entered into a contract with the city to be the consultant for our general plan land use update. And so they went ahead, they, they, they were one of many that came in, wanted to do our general plan, but they were the most, they're the most qualified group that had the most experience to come and assist the City of Needles to get us to where we need to go. Luckily, a couple of months later, actually, a few months later, in August, the city received another letter in congratulations from the Department of Transportation, Caltrans stating that we received money to update our land use element. So the City of Needles since 2020 has updated two of its elements in the general plan, which we haven't been able to do since 1986. So this is a very big moment for us. As the Chair stated, this is a study session, so the intent of the study session is to ask all the questions you may have, and then hear from the residents that are, that are here today, and the people that want to speak on behalf of their zone changes, and get an idea, and give it back to the, give your final recommendations back to us, so that we can then get it teed up for you when we meet again on the 15th of February. So that the February 15 meeting will be a public hearing where we intend to get this general plan and land use element update adopted. And so that's, that's where we're at, and we have Placeworks, who's here in, in attendance, or there in attendance with you all, that are going to go through and give their brief, well, it's not brief, because it's actually three years worth of work, so data based on their presentation. So with that, I'd like to, I'd like to introduce Colin Drucker, and then Colin will be able to introduce the rest of his team. But just so you know, this is a very long process that involved our consultants to come out. We've had multiple meetings, and they'll get into this, but it's not like this is done over the computer. These folks lived and breathed Needles for the last three years, and so it's very exciting to be able to be in front of you here today. So with that, Colin Drucker, take it away.
Thanks, Patrick. So again, my name is Colin Drucker, I'm a principal at Placeworks. We do planning throughout the state. We, our San Bernardino County office is Ontario, but we draw from staff from kind of around. I live in Long Beach and work in Santa Ana, but have been working in San Bernardino, working on cities' general plans for the last 20 years, including, we're doing work for Barstow right now. We worked for the county since 2014, 2015, doing the countywide plan, which gave us a lot of information for this effort, that we were able to streamline the, the data collection and analysis. And so we've, we've had an understanding of San Bernardino County and working in communities that, where we could bring some of our experience, and fortunately, Needles is experiencing an upwards trend in your, your finances and, and your land use options, so we really were able to come in and, and give you some good direction, working with staff and taking input from the community. Corey Witter is, is in the audience, he'll be helping if somebody has a specific, hey, my APN is this, what's going on here? In addition to augmenting city staff, worked on it for, for a while with us. On the line, we have Mike Nielsen, KOA, they were the traffic consultants to, to come onboard, especially for the transportation element, and to do the traffic analysis for the environmental, and to figure out how your roads are going to work during this process. And then Joe Gibson from Meridian, he did, he, his firm led the, the SEQA document. So you'll, you'll mostly hear from me, but they're there for any questions that you have, and so you can go ahead and tee up the, the presentation. This is a study session, I'm, it potentially would be good for me to get through the, the presentation to maybe answer the questions, but I am here at your beck and call, so interrupt me whenever you, whenever you like as well. Go ahead and, next slide. You can hold, and I'll just say next, and, because I'm trying to introduce some of the text a little bit at a lot at a time, because it's a lot sometimes, so go ahead and, and hit there. So most of the time, everybody lives and breathes with the zoning code. They look at a zoning map, they look at the zoning code, what can I do with my property, very specific, what's my parking standards? What density can I, can I build at, what exact uses? The general plan is something, as Patrick said, hasn't been updated since 1986, and it's this high-level document that's supposed to provide this broad general guide for growth on what the city's vision is, what your goals and objectives are, and how land develops, how you maintain things, what investments are made, both on, both on the public side, and what private property owners, both current, existing tenants, and prospective investors come in, and what they can do and, and what they want to do in the city. Next. So, this is a good idea. Most jurisdictions throughout the country do it. You will hear them called comprehensive plans, master plans. In California, they're called general plans, and they're required for every jurisdiction, and they have to be updated periodically. 1986 is not even close to the oldest general plan that we've updated, but they're required to be updated as needed. In general, Needles has probably needed to update its general plan for a while, but it is something that, fortunately, the finances came through, we're able to do now. But it's not like, you might hear somebody say, oh, you have to update it every 10 years. There's no prescribed exact timeline, it's just as you need to. But the general plan is supposed to be kind of the top line of decision-making. Everything has to be consistent with the general plan. So that's really a lot of the work that we did here was to bring the general plan up to speed with what's happened over the last almost 40 years, what the zoning code says, to make sure that we have consistency, and then you have guidance for the future, and some streamlining so that you don't fall out of consistency in the future. Next. So the housing element update, you all had fun with, some of you, maybe all of you in, in 2022 and, and before, but overall, all of the other elements of the general plan have been updated since 1986, and so, as I said before, a lot has changed. In some cases, it hasn't changed, and in other cases, we just wanted to bring forth updated data, understanding what the community has to say now, which is different than the 1986 timeline, which generally means that was probably prepared in the early to mid 80s. So it's just a far different environment, both locally, nationally, and even globally. Next. These are the specific numbers that Patrick referenced, so generally, when some, when a jurisdiction wants to do a general plan update, $500,000 to $1 million to cover all of the technical studies, all of the outreach, all of the work, most of it is brought up into the land use and transportation elements, because those are, those are the core elements of a general plan. What you do with your land, and what you do with your roads. And so luckily, 90% of the cost was covered by these grants, and it allowed us to provide high-level services without kind of compromising. Next. Go ahead and hit next. You can probably click through. That's one more. You can, you can, oh, there we go. There'll be another one, but we'll get to that. So we did a lot of outreach, but it was spread out over a period of time. What we did was, at first, the city got the grant for the land use element, and then we knew that the city was going to get a grant for the transportation element. And so we said, well, it's not going to make sense to do a land use element, and you're going to have to do environmental analysis on it, but you can't really update your roads. So let's just wait until the transportation element grant comes through. So there was, if, if anyone looks at it and says, hey, there seemed to be a delay, and how long did this take? It's because we were trying to align the two grants, make sure that we could plan for the city all at one time. So we sent out materials, you know, you, you do your best in these efforts to try and get, spread the word. General plans, as I said, most people live with zoning. You tell most people here to talk about zoning, not the general plan. But we're going to make them consistent. When we got input, we, we were here with, at the rec center. We got great involvement with the, the kids, coming up, showing them future ideas of what they wanted to see, kind of getting their perspective as hopefully future, long-term residents of Needles. And then when their parents, we suckered them in to stay, and we, we kind of captured their ideas. And then we had a workshop on the downtown, kind of focused in on what do we want to see in that, in that area. But we also augmented it with stakeholder interviews, both from the investor side, from property owner's side, development community, to make sure that we kind of got a, a long-term perspective, and then talked to the city's economic development folks, to the studies that have been done to understand, combined with, with our own in-house economists, about what the market looked like for commercial, office, residential, all of the different sectors, and what our land use plan should be doing. You can get it next. We also did the required tribal notification and consultation, so anytime you amend the general plan, you have to consult with the various tribes. We want to send it to, we actually did it a couple of times, because the Native American Heritage Commission gave us a longer list the, the second time, and we didn't really get any comments. We got somebody who thought this was a project, and we, we cleared that up. And then we did the 30-day public review period for the mitigated negative declaration that is the SEQA document, so that's the environmental analysis, and that got distributed. And we only got one comment from the County of San Bernardino, who just wanted us to be aware of some concerns they had about flooding, and basically how things would impact their facilities. So we were able to respond and point to existing policies, actually, that the city already has in its other elements of the general plan, plus some of the new policies and plans that we think address their concerns. Next. Can, maybe click it again. There we go. Okay. You can go ahead and click through, there'll be three, three charts, that one, that one, and then that one. Okay. So the important thing to remember in general plans, and this is often a confusion point, there's a lot of land in Needles, and even in built-out cities, we don't ever look at theoretically maximum build-out. We don't assume over the next 20 years that every single square inch of land is going to be developed at maximum intensity. We don't even assume that every square inch of land is going to be developed. We look in, at the market, we look at absorption rates, we figure out what does the city want, and then let's provide some additional buffer, where is growth going to go? Let's analyze that to see what the traffic impacts are, air quality impact, all of the different impacts, not only for the environmental document, but just so the city is aware on impacts like infrastructure, what are the extension of services? So we, we do a, a build-out projection, and it's not build-out again for maximum, it's just over the next 20 years, how much growth do we think is going to happen, and then let's always give a little bit of headroom, so that you can be flexible and respond to, to things that you didn't expect. So the two charts above show the relatively stable population, both in housing and, and people from Needles. So we think that an extra 1,000 units, which turns into 2,500, it might be 2,000, it might be 3,000 people, and almost 1,000 jobs, that's a pretty good amount of headroom for the city. Definitely for the next 10 years, which sometimes, that's about the shortest that general plans last, and even over the period of 20 years. And you can always update this again in, let's say, 10 years. If you're getting a huge amount of residential growth, and it's awesome, and you go, look, we didn't think this was going to happen this fast, you can always go in and update it. But I'll get into it a little bit later as to why you don't want to over-project when you're looking at all, how you build your systems. Next, when you can. Hit again, I did. Okay, so I'm going to go over some of the, just real high level. This is the main meat of the land use and transportation element. There's the goals and policies, and then there's the maps. The maps are the more interesting parts. But by and large, what we wanted to do was look at the city's existing general plan, and most of the time, you don't find anything too horrible in an existing general plan, right? Everybody's got some basic planning principles they worked with, and so we just refined the land use goals, made them a, a little bit better, or a little bit more up-to-date. So the concept of compatibility was obviously in the current land use element. We're just kind of rewording it and then rephrasing some of the policies to, to work with where the city wants to go. So want to make sure that there's attraction for residential, new residential growth, new opportunities for jobs, and figuring out how they can kind of work in tandem. So then, I think the, when we go to the, the next slide. Oh, that's okay. I like it, it keeps me on my toes, I just have to. There's a little speed run of our presentation. If you can remember what I said, you're doing great. I won't attempt to do kind of like an auctioning type sound. So this, and this goes hand in glove, the first one goes hand in glove with the, the second goal, which is to have a diversified economy. So this is trying to lay the groundwork as much as we can, not knowing what industries might be there in the future, but leveraging the advantages that the city has, and trying to make sure that whenever the city can identify additional industries or jobs that can come and take advantage of the benefits that Needles has to offer, that it does so, so to kind of spread the economic strength of the city across multiple baskets, right? We don't want to just go into one basket, say, this is what we're going to be for the next 20 years, because generally, cities tend to cycle on the strengths of the economy, on what industries work there. You know, the railroad is, is kind of coming, coming back even more so over the last 10 years. So that's good. Obviously, you have your kind of tourist and destination, and you've got a new hotel that's, that's demonstrating that Needles is a place where people are looking to invest. You have your ability to kind of take advantage of the interest in cannabis, and then look at the other types of industries that could take advantage of your water and electric benefits. And then working with the Community College and others to try and do workforce training for those who have jobs here, and those who need jobs elsewhere. Next. Oh. It's perfect timing, so I think I'm going to go on the land use map next. So when, I will preface that by saying, again, this is a study session, so we're, we were notifying everybody ahead of the public hearing, but wanted to notify everybody of all of the study sessions and, and public hearings that we're anticipating. So tonight, to hear everyone, another chance at a study session with city council on the 14th, and then Planning Commission on, is currently slated for a public hearing, to actually make a recommendation potentially to the city council. If the Planning Commission makes a recommendation to move it forward, and it can with or without changes, then it will go to the city council anticipated on the 28th. And in part, we're looking at that because of the grant timeline, so the Caltrans grant, really what it says is that Placeworks and the other consultants have to stop billing in February. It's great to get it done in February, you know, if, if the discussion merits it. Obviously, it's up to the Planning Commission and the city council as to when the, the decision takes place, and we'll just keep you apprised of the, the decision points.
Madam Chair, can I intervene with a question while he's there? Madam Chair? Are you on mute?
Yeah, I was on mute, sorry, Barbara, go ahead.
Um. Forgot it. Oh, you said on changes. Now, if we have, I have notes everywhere, they're just, a lot of them are for me, so hopefully, so everybody doesn't shoot me in the parking lot. If we are discussing changes tonight, or possibilities of changes, recommendations, we're asking new questions, and you're giving, let's see, if I ask, you're going to give me a recommendation that's going to say, okay, that's handled, we don't need to recommend that. Does the SEQA, if the city council agrees with any changes we make, or recommend they make, does the SEQA get touched? Do we have to start the SEQA over from scratch, or does it simply go on as it is?
I, I will, Joe's on the line, he can answer if, if, if needed. I'll attempt an answer, and he can jump in if I, for some reason, get it wrong. Our Meridian consultants does SEQA work, Placeworks also does, so I'm kind of SEQA-adjacent with all of my projects, so I have a dangerous enough knowledge of it, especially when it comes to general plans, so the answer is it depends, right, which is, I, but I can give you more parameters than that. So if you are looking at wordsmithing, any policy definitions of, of land uses, 99% of those are a non-issue. Fixing errors, fixing, you know, consistency issues, not a, not a problem. If you're, let's say, and I'm just going to do a hypothetical to be extreme, let's say you say, oh, in, in commercial, I don't want to allow anything but X use at all, and then we might have to kind of consider that one to say, well, when we looked at it, impacts from a SEQA perspective, does that change what our analysis was? And that's, even that one still may or may not, because what the, the heart of the SEQA analysis is really, how many units? How many jobs? How many square feet? How many people? Did we think we're going to go in different places, for different parts of Needles? And then we run a traffic model to say, okay, how many trips did that generate? How much pollution does that generate? It's not a SEQA issue, but we're still concerned. What is the level of service on the roadways? How do the roadways function? So if you were to, let's say, ask for, and I'm going to be extreme, double the number of housing units that we analyzed, right? Yes, we would probably have to go back and start the SEQA over, because we did not study 2,000 units, we studied 1,000 units. I can, sometimes we get a question on that one, so I'll take the opportunity. The land use map has a, a lot of colors on it that allow a lot of things. Just because our general, just because our general plan did 1,000 units, doesn't really mean you're limited to 1,000 units in the exact places. It provides this programmatic analysis that says, okay, we're, we know that we don't know exactly which parcel this is going to take place on. We're going to do a what-if scenario and we'll, and a lot of those impacts are going to be the same regardless of where the, where the development goes. Some will be hyper-specific. All future projects are going to have to come in and do their own analysis as appropriate for very site-specific issues. But if, for example, there was a parcel or an area of the city that we said there's 50 units are going to go here and somebody can't said, well, technically according to the zoning, the general plan, I can do 100 units. You don't, you don't need to worry about it. The general plan covers you for about 1,000 units. It's, it's good to treat as, okay, we have about 1,000 units to play with. Yeah, kind of matters and where exactly where they go. But that's mostly for roadway performance issues. Again, not really a SEQA issue. So the general plan map will give you a lot of flexibility. And so you can change, in many ways, even you can change colors on the map and say, I want to, instead of general commercial, I want this to be multifamily. Or instead of multifamily, I want this to be public facility. We can, we can do those changes and by and large, it's not going to have a ripple effect. And in many ways, it's also the amount of changes we make. If, if, if we make so many changes that this is fundamentally a different plan, I will defer to Joe on that, but I imagine it's, there's a certain smell test where you start to go, okay, even though the numbers don't change, you know, we have completely inverted the land use map. And so maybe this warrants kind of something to, you know, taking a step back.
Well, my main concern is going to be when you get to it, unless you're going to answer my question now and then I'll not have anything further to say about it. I'm back to C2, which came up in our last planning commission meeting and I never got an answer. So I'm still on that issue.
Okay.
And apparently, based on what I'm seeing, it's 190, page 194, 195 in here and maybe the surrounding pages. Apparently, you want to take the commercial C2, particularly in the downtown area, but we have C2 at Bosch's where we're going to try and put a grocery store. We have C2 at the old city council building lot, Kitty Corner from El Garcia's, which is C2. And you're, you want to take all that zoning, the C2 zones and then insert multifamily residential, right? Is that correct?
It's, so as, as the city's current zoning code is written right now, someone correct me if I'm getting this wrong for some reason. Multifamily is allowed in the C2 zone. It requires a special.
It is.
Yes. What we are doing is we are trying to streamline the provision of multifamily to more housing throughout Needles. And the general commercial zone, which I'll just use zoning for right now. We're trying to, I'll get to it. We're trying to mush the map into one map. So you don't have to worry about.
Right. Patrick's told me several times.
Yeah. So the C2 zone, which already allows multifamily, we're just trying to say, okay, you can do multifamily a little bit easier here. And in the downtown area, that broadly, there's a broader downtown than what we call the downtown core. What we want to do is say, hey, if you want to do non-residential, you can do even more intense development here. So more development, non-residential, commercial, hotel, whatever you want, for the most part, in C2. And you can also do multifamily standalone, not single family because we don't want to dilute the, the capacity of the land use.
So the C2 is not for single family currently?
Correct. It's, it's not for single family and we did not want to add single family in there. Because once you get single family in there, it's, you basically take, it's, anytime you get, most uses, it's going to stay there for a while. Single family stays for a long time.
It's going to be a mess.
Yeah. So, and then we wanted to facilitate mixed use development, which wasn't really named. It's, and the way you do it currently in the city zoning code would be the, the planned unit development.
Well, there was a developer, I understood. I don't know if I ever saw any evidence of it, but I heard of a developer who I am now informed is gone, that was going to develop behind, on the parcel by the city, the old Chamber of Commerce building. Okay. Kitty Corner from El Garcia's.
Yeah.
And he was going to put condos in there and either strip malls or some kind of shop. Shop formation where maybe there were shops around, maybe in a circle or something. I'm not sure. I never found out. And so I thought that was a fantastic idea. So in that case, you're looking at condos. You have the FAR system where you can build up depending on how much space you have.
Yes.
In here. This is all very well done, by the way. I was thrilled when I got through most of it.
Okay.
Not how, not all of it. But this is the most important issue to me as the C2, mixing it in with commercials. So the condo development, if somebody ever did come in and want to do that.
Yeah.
It would already be zoned for that or given, or land use would already be there for it because it's all commercial down there, all the way up to Bosch's, up to the I-40. It's all the green color on the map. C2 is most of that, if not all of it. So they could mix the multifamily residences, which means if you have, if you want to buy a condo, though, it's a single family residence, is it not?
Well, no condominium is just a form of ownership. So the, the structure type, whether it's single family detached, a town home or what people might call, you know, single family attached. And then there's duplexes, all the way to fourplexes. And once you get to five or more units attached, that's where almost everybody says, oh yes, that's multifamily. I tend to think if you're living only next to someone on your left or right, that's single family. If someone's living above or you're living above someone, to me, that's multifamily. That's just my personal definition.
So one story and up, that's, I wanted somebody to explain to me what they thought C2 was. So you're doing exactly.
Yeah.
What I've been laboring over.
Yeah. So the, we, what we did was we added mixed use development as a more explicit permitted use so that people didn't think, oh, I can't do a mix of uses in here, whether it's horizontal on the same parcel, you know, same ownership. Right. That, that's the intensity. Those are the intensity illustrations. So in C2, in the downtown core, you could do up to 2.0 FAR, which is the tallest graphic you have there, which for, for those who don't, and this is even most planners don't handle FAR easily. So you, you, you take, there's two ways of measuring intensity of development. On residential side, you tend to just define it as how many units in an acre that, that, that is on, on a parcel. Most single family is between two and five units an acre. Sometimes it goes up to eight units an acre. Technically, in like, you know, old time and resort towns, you can get up to like 20 units an acre and still be single family detached. There's little cottages and stuff. But generally, single family, you know, will go up to 10, 12 units an acre. You know, it can get a little higher. And then you get into the single family attached, which some people also say is medium density. And, and then you go into high density and that's, you know, up to 30 units an acre. So that's residential. Then you get into non-residential. And you're, you're currently, you're, you're lacking in, in a, a definition of that in the general plan, which it's not that you don't have it, it's just that it's not explicitly stated. You have maximum heights. In some cases, you don't have maximums, but you just allow it to, to be what it is. You have setbacks. You have open space requirements. You have parking requirements. So there's a way to figure out, okay, here's what kind of the amount of building space we allow to go on a parcel, given satisfying all of the other requirements. The, the way that people can describe intensity in a really, I don't want to say easy, but a short way is a term called floor area ratio. And is the amount of building floor space compared to the area of the parcel. So if you have a, a 10,000 square foot parcel and you have an, an FAR of 0.5, then that means you can put 5,000 square feet of building space on a 10,000 square foot parcel. To make it a little bit more relatable, most shopping areas are between 0.15 and 0.25 FAR. And you think about, you go to the, you know, you go to the right edge, you sit there and you go, okay, there's a huge parking lot. There's drive aisles, there's little setbacks from the sidewalk. There's extra little open space sometimes, or just some inefficiencies or just a lack of need to occupy all the space. And then you have the, the shops themselves. And there's a, usually the FAR is the intensity of non-residential space is really pretty low until you get to places like the downtown. And then you have old parcels, in some cases were partialized before the invention of the car or before, you know, cars were really popular or people needed huge amounts of space. And people built buildings real close to the sidewalk. And they just, nobody cared about parking. And so you don't have parking. And now in downtowns, oddly enough, from an economic standpoint, you want a level of service of F ideally, which is means like how much congestion? So that you get a lot of, a lot of activity. So that's what those diagrams show is in the downtown core, we're doing, allowing an FAR of two, which means.
I'm going to, I'm going to interrupt you because I have to go to the little girl's room. Madam, Madam Chair, may I have a five minute break or a two minute break?
Yeah, we'll, we'll, yeah, just wait a couple of minutes.
Go say no.
Thank you, Colin.
That was a great answer. I want to hear more.
Okay.
We'll pause then for a couple of minutes and wait for Barbara. Thank you.
Yeah, I was going to say, that would be best.
All right. In the meantime, Dan, I want to work with you to get the PowerPoint presentation squared away. So do you want to pull it back up on your screen real quick, Dan, please? See if I can. Okay. And then do the enable editing. Maybe that's what it was. And, and we are being recorded right now still, folks, so just keep, bear with us. But we're trying to do technical difficulties. So one second. Okay. All right. There you go. Perfect.
Yeah, better to see.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Okay, we can resume.
So yes, we're allowing a lot of intensity.
These all have the commercial.
Yes.
They all have 2.0. 2.0. There's one neighborhood commercial in here. C1 is 0.5. But these are all 1.0, 2.0, 1.0.
Yeah.
These are all very adequate. At first I saw 30 units and I have all my little notes about how big all of our developments, our trailer parks. How many do we need per acre?
Yeah.
To make it worthwhile for a developer to even start? Well, then when I saw we have, it's FAR, that gives them the room if they go up a story or a few stories, just like the Hampton Inn did.
Yes.
But is that something that a developer will do? If we have these downtown mixed in with, in the neighborhood, in the downtown core, like right around the El Garcia's?
Yeah, we're trying to provide, there's always a tipping point for developers on when it makes more financial sense if you offer more intensity. And so if somebody's looking to invest in, in Needles and they say, okay, you can only do X in, in this zone. And they say, well, in order to make it worthwhile, I, I need to go to three stories and, and do, you know, a combination of residential and non-residential. And I just theoretically, oh, I can't do that yet. So what we try to provide is enough headroom that developers are going to come in and say, this is more than enough. I'm never going to be hindered by this, but it's still appropriate. So in neighborhood commercial, we say, look, neighborhood commercial is not a mixed use zone. It's near, it's the, usually the closest one to single family homes and other multifamily neighborhoods. It is the one that's intended to serve the local area. It does not need to be super intense. In the downtown, perfectly fine. Even in the general commercial, those are areas where, you know, that's a two-story building covering 50% of the lot. And generally, any sort of retail buildings are going to need enough parking to be able to make it work. In the downtown, we think, hey, you've got some open spaces that could be used for parking. You don't have a parking problem right now. It's good to have a parking problem in downtown as long as it's not, you know, as long as there's activity there. So we try to provide enough incentives. We work, we also do specific, specific plans with private development. So, and we have done for a long period of time. So we talk to individual developers and say, look, what are the development standards you need to do something here? And so Needles has had a pretty flexible set of development standards. And with the PUD, you, you could kind of, kind of make it up as you go along to a certain degree. But this just provides more certainty and clarity to the development community.
Now, if you have two of these land use elements next to each other that are different and a developer wants to develop on both.
Uh huh. So two, two different zones, let's just say, right?
Or land uses.
Yeah, yeah.
Under the same zone. That wouldn't.
Well, so, so what we're trying to do, and that's what's on the screen right now, is you have two maps. One shows general plan, one shows zoning. It's hard to tell. They're different color schemes. So it's hard to tell what's consistent and what's not consistent. But when you, normally what happens is a jurisdiction does a two map, that, that has a two map system like you have right now. And it is because, and this is, this is what we did in the county, they had 120 different zones. While we didn't need 120 general plan designations, you just do 12 general plan designations in that case. When you have a huge number of zones, okay, at a, from a general plan level, you want to see where's your land use going in a high level. You don't want to see, oh, this is R1-AA/SCP, right? So it gives you that clear, concise image. But Needles has essentially the same number of general plan designations as it does zoning designations. And so then it just becomes kind of an annoying obstacle because they're kind of different, but not really different. So we said, okay, let's make it cleaner in the future and just make it a one map system. And actually, if you go to the next slide, it'll be a little bit more apparent. So I've generally aligned the, the likes to like here and said, okay, the, on the far, on the far left is your current general plan. The middle is current zoning. And then this is what we're proposing. We're also trying to update the, and I'll get to your question in a second. We're also trying to update the color scheme so that it's, it's more consistent with both just planning practice and also when you can equate a darker intensity of color with a more, a greater intensity of usage. So that you know, okay, single family is a light yellow, multifamily is an orange. So that means there's more units there. And you don't have that consistency right now with, with your current standards designation. So to get back to your question, if you have, I'm just going to use the proposed land use and zoning. If that's okay.
Take the new one. Yes.
Yes. Okay. So if you have multifamily on one parcel and commercial, general commercial on the other adjacent parcel, right? And somebody wants to develop on both of them, that's the scenario you're talking about? Then they could either decide that they want to consolidate the lots and.
Would that be a lot merger?
That would be a lot merger. And then you would also need to do a, a zoning change and general plan amendment.
And how long do you think that would take to go through our city?
I, I will now defer to city staff.
Yeah. So hi.
You said a zoning, a zone and application for a zone change?
Yeah, be a zone change in a, in a general plan amendment.
Okay. Go ahead, Patrick.
Yeah, it would matter if the.
Well, there's lot merger first.
It'd make a difference if the SEQA was done on the parcel or not. Anytime that you do a zone change, we, in general plan amendment, we, we need to be able to make a SEQA determination. And so in order to do it on your own, I would say, you know, going through the public hearing process, six months, I'd say.
So about two years.
About six months.
But I'll, I'll augment that with, so if you just wanted to, here's how a developer would do it in general, from what I just.
Yeah, and I don't know. So I need to hear that.
If you, a developer might want to do the lot merger. You can do a lot merger without changing the, the zoning. And I was kind of jumping ahead. I apologize for that. You, you do the lot merger if you want. And that doesn't, that usually, that's a pretty quick process. And then you would propose a development that includes a general plan and, and zoning change request. So if, if, and because it is, if you want to take one parcel that's planned for commercial and one that's planned for multifamily and you want to change it up, then you're changing the land use plan and you're changing the zoning for it. And so that becomes, that's a discretionary action for the, the city council as, as reviewed by you. So then there needs, it's subject to SEQA because it's a, you're, you're changing the land use plan.
So even with the lot merger, even though it's quicker, we still have to go through SEQA. It's a SEQA.
If you're proposing to, to change the use, what you could do is if, let's say, somebody wanted to do mixed use, this is where you kind of get into horizontal mixed use. You could decide that, okay, I'm going to have my commercial over here and I'm going to have my residential over here. Nothing, then you're just going through what's permitted.
Is a city planner? Is the city planner usually the one that can make that decision without planning commissioner city council approval?
They can, and tell me to shut up if I'm saying anything wrong, but they, in general, I'm, I'm, you or anyone, really. Um, hopefully not the audience, but, uh, in general, the city planner is the one who can tell you what would be required. If you wanted, if you said, hey, I, this is what I want to do, what type of steps do I need to do? So the, the city planner is, they, they can't tell you, yes, be blessed and, and you can just do whatever you want, but they'll tell you what the course of action would be.
Okay, this is in our municipal code now. I, I, when I requested a copy of this back in the dark ages. This went to, it's, it's our table of uses.
Yes.
With our zone. And then the last page is page four fifty-seven, and I didn't get four fifty-eight. This ends in the middle of a sentence, so I don't know any more than what's here.
Yeah.
And I didn't have time to pull it up. I didn't think it was a priority. Um, but I did, I would like the answer to this because it's in our municipal code. Uh, it's section ninety-six zero-two underneath the table of all the uses and zones. The city planner jurisdiction over uses otherwise permissible with a zoning permit.
Yes.
Notwithstanding any other provisions of this article, whenever the table of permissible uses provides that a use in a non-residential zone. Or a non-conforming use in a residential zone is permissible with a zoning permit. A special use permit shall nevertheless be required if the city planner finds that the proposed use. Would have an extraordinary impact on neighboring properties, blah, blah, blah. Assume that didn't happen, okay? There's no extraordinary impact. In making this determination, the city planner shall consider, and that's all I have.
So I, I think what you're.
There's authority here with the city planner to do some of this.
I think, well, what I believe and, and, and anybody in the city can jump in afterwards, but what that's referring to is. Who has the authority to interpret the permitted use table? So when you're trying to say, hey, is my salon allowed in this zone? And let's just say, I don't, maybe I picked a bad example. Let's say salon's not a listed use. Then it defers to the city planner to make the interpretation of what's permitted.
Right.
I, in general, I think things can be appealed, uh, when you're, when you're, you know, getting an interpretation that somebody disagrees with. Um, but that's what that section was talking about is really interpreting that land use, that permitted use table.
Okay, I've seen one C2 online somewhere that had about four pages of permitted uses under C2. It just went on for every business in the whole wide world so that, you know, anybody could do anything under C2.
Yeah, general commercial is, you know, as its name, it's, it's kind of a, hey, you want to do a commercial, and sometimes there's. A desire to list a large number of uses because people have a lot of different types of businesses. That they say, well, is this like this? And you go, well, not quite. So let's list a large number of businesses to make sure it's clear. We're okay with these types of uses, or some of them require special treatment.
So generally speaking, um, it's not advisable then for a developer to come in. With, if, if he's proposing or he already owns property with two separate land use descriptions.
It all, it all depends on what they want to do with it. Like if they're in.
Home, housing development with, it could be apartment buildings, okay? Um, I can't even, like, there are too many scenarios. I, I'm trying to, I'm, okay, go ahead.
Like multifamily next to C2. You're good. You can do multifamily on both parcels. You don't need anybody's.
So one would cross over, the, the permissible uses on the one would be permissible on the other one.
Well, yeah, you'd look at the, it, it, just in that scenario, if you want to do apartments and you had two parcels and you said. One's orange and one's red, you know, darn it. And then you look in the use matrix and you say, oh. I can do multifamily apartments in both the R3 and the C2 zone. Great. Then it just comes down to how you want to control the ownership of the lots.
Okay.
But if you're going to own everything, you don't care.
The city wouldn't have an issue with that because it matches. I mean, it qualifies under both zones, under both, uh, under both uses.
Right. And then it kind of gets into the weeds about, well, how, what are the setbacks? Do you care about setbacks to the property line? Or do you set, care about just building to building separation? So it gets.
I think the city's pretty good about that.
Yeah.
Okay, if that, maybe we could have him continue, Barbara.
Yes, yes, I'm finished. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead.
So we've, we've talked a lot about the, the land use designations, and this is where we're trying to go from kind of. One set of color, two, two different sets of colors into one more uniform sets of colors. Um, and if you go to the next slide. Uh, so we have, uh, a land use map that's in the, um, draft land use element. That shows just the plan for the entire city that is proposed. Then, um, because we were taking a nineteen eighty-six general plan land use map. That did not seem to have been updated for quite some time, um, and was fairly inconsistent with the zoning map. There are a lot of changes that we made. Um, just be, and in most cases, we're deferring to the zoning for what's on the ground. Um, so what we did though was in an attempt to communicate to property owners, decision makers, and just anybody interested in it. Um, because we were making so many changes was to, it's hard to look at a map and say, where's my property? Is, what's it before and after you do, you know, you just get cross-eyed looking at both of them. So we said, well, let's put them online. This is kind of extra from what we've been able to do over the last decade or so. So we have the PDF map, we have the hard copy, people, people can still see, they can see the old map, they can see the new map. But we put on, on the, uh, the city's website a link to a map we created that allows you to understand. Basically, if, if your parcel is on here and it has a color on it, that's a land use map color. That means we're changing something about the, the general plan or the zoning or both. Um, if there's just an aerial underneath here, it means your zoning and general plan were fine. And that was, that was true for, for a lot of them. So, um, we have some instructions on how to use the maps. It's, it's. Basically like using Google Maps, uh, but you can go in and, and click on them. Um, you can search by your address. Uh, it's kind of hard to get the functionality to search by APN, even though that's kind of how we set it out. But everyone should generally know their address or be able to navigate to where their property is. And then you can click on a parcel. And it'll bring up what is your current general plan, current zoning, and what is your proposed land use and zoning. Um, so if you go to the, um, next slide. So I'm going to walk through the kind of magnitude and type of changes. Um, but all of them were really considering existing land use patterns. And so I kind of have in parentheses, we're really refining the land use map. We're not redefining needles. We didn't go through and say, oh. Needles is no longer this type of city. It really is, you know, it's no longer a mix of industrial. Uh, uh, residential, open space, commercial, it's all an industrial, you know, we didn't do that. We basically just refined the land use plan. So that everything's consistent. Uh, go ahead, next. So, um, some folks may look at this map and say, oh, I see red on there. It's general commercial. I heard Colin say something about. Not yet, but, um, I heard Colin say something about how single family is not allowed in the downtown core and it's not allowed in the general commercial. So wait a minute, I'm a single family home and I'm on a parcel. So there were, we looked through every single parcel. There's a hundred and thirty-nine existing single family homes or mobile homes that would be non-conforming uses. And what that means is they're not currently permitted, or they're not proposed to be permitted by the zone. And therefore, there's some limitations on what they can do. Now, the city's non-conforming provisions basically allow for single family homes to continue in perpetuity. You know, it means forever. And you can make pretty substantial improvements. If it burns down partially, you can steal where you build. So it's a pretty protective clause for people saying, I bought this home and now I'm, am I not permitted? No, no, you can stay there. A hundred and eleven were already in this position with the city's current zoning. So we, we didn't cause any additional problems for the hundred and eleven. And then twenty-eight would be non-conforming. Um, but there were instances where the surrounding uses were really. Let, let's say industrial or water facilities, stuff, things like that. But we knew that, okay, the non-conforming provision allows these. Folks to continue to live there. And then the next. No active businesses would be made, made non-conforming by any of the changes that we're proposing. So if a lot's vacant, then we may have changed the zoning. But there's no non-conforming use on there because it's vacant. But we looked at all the active businesses and said, okay, is this business allowed in the new zone? Yes, okay, good. So we wanted to make sure that we were aware of and didn't unnecessarily create any non-conforming issues. Next. So there's about thirty-two hundred parcels in Needles. Um, and we, this is why some people got notices. Uh, we wanted to make sure, both consistent with state law and the city's only, uh, uh, zoning code or, uh, city code. Make sure that everyone was aware that we're potentially making changes to their parcels. So we sent out. Uh, before in advance of the public hearing, but we, I think we got it to everybody in advance of tonight's workshop. It was probably pretty short notice for tonight's workshop, but we also have another study session on the, on the fourteenth. Um, so there's thirty-two hundred parcels in Needles. Go ahead in the next. So for forty-eight percent of them, about fourteen hundred, there's either no change or all we did was change the name. Because we're trying to, again, consolidate the two maps into one map. So it may have been instead of medium density residential, it's now called R2, two-family residential. So it's the exact same use. It's just we got rid of the general plan name is most of the time. Go ahead. And, um, these are all additives. So all this, this number will get to a hundred percent. So twenty-eight percent, about nine hundred, was a GP change only. So we just said, okay, the GP is no longer appropriate. The zoning is actually the better one and matches what's on the ground. Next. Four hundred of them were zone change only. In some cases, and there was a lot of, uh, kind of split zoning. There were a lot of parcels where the, the polygons of color overlapped, and so you had two different zones technically, or two different general plan designations on one parcel. And so we would pick, pick one, the dominant one, the one with the most appropriate. Um, in most cases, it created these little slivers. So it wasn't really functional, it was just technically wrong. So we changed the zoning because the general plan was more appropriate. Next. And then the balance, it's really like three hundred and ninety-six or something like that. But it's about four hundred where we changed both the general plan and the zoning. Um, in some cases, it was, okay, it's either open space on this or residential on this, and it's really a commercial use, something like that. Next. So of those four hundred where we really changed everything about it. Most of them, you know, a little bit more than half were either owned by city, state, feds. We included BNSF in that quasi-public ownership. Most of that was, we basically are respecting what's going on around the railroad. Um, and then about five percent, a hundred and seventy were under private ownership. Um, so that's, those are really the ones where we are changing something in a fundamental way. But in all cases, we're looking at what's on the ground and trying to match the maps to respect what's going on. And in some cases, okay, nothing's going on over here, but what's the most appropriate land use given the rest of the pattern?
Have you heard from me? I'm sorry, madam chair? Quick question.
Go ahead.
Have you heard from any of those hundred seventy people? Have we? I guess the city needs to answer that, right?
Madam Chair?
Yes, go ahead, Patrick.
I would defer to Dawn, uh, Cavello or city planner. I do believe that she has been reached out to in the last couple of days. In terms of getting information on how they could check on their parcel. But I'll defer to Dawn, uh, who's there in the audience to, to, to talk about any proposed changes that were requested.
Majority of the calls that I did receive were just questions as far as whether it affected them or it didn't. But I would go over the, the map with them, say what their current is, what their proposed is. Some did not change, some were legal, non-conforming. Um, I also received emails as well, so I've been getting back to those with. Within the last two days, I've had majority of calls and.
So far, so good. Thank you.
Welcome. Thank you. Go ahead, Colin.
Yeah, so, um, if you can go to the next, next slide, I think. So this is, it kind of hearkens back to the, some of the earlier conversations. These are the, so if you look at the draft land use element, you'll see the map. And then you'll see, uh, a, a table. Actually, I think maybe the table comes first. Yeah, the table comes first. It's exhibit one. And you're holding it up right there, matches what's on the screen. Um, and this is the kind of seventy percent of the table. There's, there's industrial uses and whatnot off, uh, off of it. But what we did was we, um. Made sure that the zoning, um, and the general plan definitions of the land use categories. And, and really kind of the typical uses. And we have a note that says, this is typical. There may not, you know, the zoning code will be more specific about exactly which type of uses. Are, are allowed. Um, but we still provided the general direction of what is the intent of these land use categories. And then we added in more specifically beyond residential, the density and intensity thresholds. And then provided some, some of those diagrams to explain, okay, when we say point five FAR. What could that look like in a couple of different ways? And obviously, there's multiple ways this could happen. Next. So the, the third land use goal is really about, um, maximizing the, the value you have out of the Colorado River. Um, improving public access and, and use of that. So we have a number, a handful of, of policies to provide direction on, on. What to do. Next. And then this is where we get into the downtown. This is the, from the run for the wall from twenty seventeen. Um, to kind of have the downtown as a local and regional destination, make it more walkable. Um, I'll get into the downtown in a second. Um, and, and, and the next slide, actually, you can just go to the next slide. In the, this is the, the area outlined there, which is exhibit two in the draft land use element, land use and transportation element. This is what we consider the downtown core. Uh, we did in the downtown workshop, we looked at a variety of relevant downtowns throughout. The, the southwest in general, um, and looked at the size and scale of them. And, you know, your downtown core, you, you, you don't want to spread it out too much. You want to have some intensity in a, in a nucleus of an area. Um, and so we looked at Broadway and we ran the traffic study and we said, all right. What, what roadways, um, do we need to keep the same? And are there anywhere we have too much capacity and maybe it's appropriate to change it? And Broadway is a, is a very wide street right now. Um, and then the downtown area, you want to promote walkability and the ease of someone to be able to cross the street and. But still retain the ability to close down the street and have a festival and, and do something that requires a little bit of space. Um, but encourage people to be able to walk and bike, uh, with the safety in mind without having to worry about cars, you know, four lanes of traffic. So that's what we have in the last exhibit in the draft land use and transportation element is an exhibit that shows the cross-sections. And the proposed cross-section for Broadway in general, both in that downtown core and kind of for the extent of. The broader, the greater downtown area. We only need two lanes of travel there. And instead of parallel parking, we can change it to angular parking, which provides some buffer. Um, it slows cars down a little bit more, but it actually expands your parking capacity. And then still retain the existing sidewalks and, but it gives you that fifteen to twenty feet of buffer. And just that soft space so that people walking down the street can say, oh, okay, I'm not having to worry about just cars zooming past. Or even just the annoyance of cars, uh, running past. Um, so, you know, kind of the redesign from a pass-through roadway to encouraging somebody to, to slow down. Next. So this is where we get into the zoning, and this is kind of, uh, uh, refreshing what I had referred to, looking at that C2 zone in the downtown core. Um, and allowing for more shared parking provisions because you do have some resources that are beyond the parcel. And you can't literally provide the parking on the parcel in some cases. Um, but that's okay because there's, uh, we need more activity in the, in the downtown area. Reducing setbacks in a, in a couple of areas, just allowing people to build closer to the lot lines because you already have that situation in a lot of them. Lowering bedroom unit sizes so people can get more units on the same, uh, same lot. Um, and then bumping up that FAR so you have more intensity here. And then we also, um, augmented what the city already does for protective measures, um, in certain, around certain uses. And in the downtown core, uh, are proposing some limitations on any cannabis-related activities in this downtown core. Next. So then there's two transportation goals. Um, and the first one is really about just having a functional, safe, efficient roadway system. Um, for everyone, emergency services and everybody driving through and doing business. Uh, next photo, or next slide. So this is the proposed roadway network, and, um, we are, um, suggesting to the city. That, um, there's a number of roadways where they have really, um. A, a large number of travel lanes that are theoretically proposed for them because. Most of the time when people do roadway networks, they say, okay, we're going to need a four-lane facility all over the place for these big arterials. And it's, it's really overbuilt in, in, in many ways in terms of a plan. So we sat down with the city and said, all right, let's, let's be pragmatic here. Let's understand whether or not you can live with the current number of lanes you have in Needles. Without improving any of the, of the roadways. And when I say improving, I don't mean not paving them. I mean, you're doing a great job of that. I mean, not widening the roads, not restriping to add more lanes of traffic. Because if the city could. Because if the city could live with its current roadway system, then it saves everybody money. And you don't have to worry about creating more problems with safety conflicts or encouraging faster traffic where you don't want it. And luckily, we said, great. The existing roadway network for the city actually works pretty well. We don't need to increase it. And in fact, on Broadway, that's why Broadway has its own roadway classification, we can probably do a road diet and redesign that to be more friendly. And then we'll get into this in the, the bike and ped network, but we introduced kind of a multimodal loop in order to figure out how to get people around the city in an easier, safer fashion without cars. But this is really all about right sizing the roadways while maintaining good traffic flow. We looked at the level of service performance, basically how long you're waiting at lights or stop signs, or just through the midpoints of, of roadways. And made sure that if we adjusted the roadway classifications with a lot of the streets going either staying local or going down to local with two lanes of travel, that you would be well served. And it looks like, according to our projections, you have even more capacity still on, on those. So we're trying to make sure that the city spends its money wisely, focuses on maintaining the quality of the roads without trying to spend money to improve them beyond their needed capacity. Next. The second part is kind of the non-vehicular part, the, what about all the people who are on, without an engine? Internal combustion engine, I should say. Next slide. So we have a series of, of maps here and some policies that go along with that goal that focus on, now, this is all kind of future condition map. This is not trying to say that there are improved sidewalks and a multimodal loop and trails everywhere. This is our future looking. Trying to create that multimodal loop I was, loop I was talking about to say there's the downtown, there's the neighborhoods around the downtown, there's the neighborhoods in the, around the school and the medical facility. And how can we get people around so that we look at the, the roadway there? And allow for and promote people to walk and bike more safely along that. So we really focused on the redesign of that street. Gave a couple of options on how you can do that. We were keeping in mind in K O A, provided some of the kind of cost implications of, of our designs whenever we were considering them. And then there's a little purple dash underneath the railroad that I'm sure everybody already knows, you know, the K Street underpass, which is currently closed and proposing to kind of reopen that up for emergency services as far as vehicles, and then otherwise, non-vehicular movement. The city will have the option if it wants to open it up for vehicular movement in the future, it can, you know, always kind of change these things. These are not set in stone. This is a living document. But it does need to be, you know, if you, if you updated it, it's done through a public process, but right now we're saying K Street underpass would be a good connection to reintroduce so that people on different sides of the railroad tracks could get across without having to try and figure out how to get access by way of a vehicle. And in general, we're just trying to formalize some of the pathways that people take kind of at their own risk right now. Next slide. And then really we're just documenting your current transit network and offering some policies about opportunities to enhance and, and expand service whenever possible. Next slide. And then the truck network. So right now, the city has those red lines on there. The city has oversight, areas where oversized vehicles are prohibited. What we wanted to do is go a step further and say, we want to show where trucks are permissible and encouraged, and that would be the freeway and a few places in order to get across the bridge. But what we want to do is, is discourage trucks. And when I say trucks, I mean, you know, what people think of is when they think of a semi-trailer, you know, large trucks that are extremely loud and, and heavy. And we wanted to discourage them from getting anywhere near the, the neighborhoods. And really kind of keep them on the freeway. Ultimately, this comes down to a matter of enforcement, but at least you have something now in the general plan where you can point to and say, okay, these are our local truck routes. You're not supposed to go here. These are where you're definitely prohibited, even oversized, so not just trucks, but anything because the roads. Either the turning radius is not good enough there, or there's concerns from the railroad, or there's concerns from kind of a, a safety perspective. Next. Okay, then I'm going to do one slide on Sequo. We can, we can take more questions on it, but just as a broad stroke summary. Anytime you update a general plan or a zoning code, that's an action that's discretionary. It's up to the decision makers and therefore it's subject to state law that says you have to go look at twenty or twenty-one different topics. All looking at what are the potential impacts of this project, this project being the potential build out of a general plan and its policies and the zoning updates we're doing. What are the potential impacts on the environment? And that ranges from things that are fuzzy, you know, biological resources to are the city zoning code and land use projections from regional entities to utilities and public services. It's still a high level document. And the city still maintains its master plans and, and will update those in, in regular fashion to respond to existing systems, but the Sequo documents and the analysis that we did here is to communicate to the public, hey, here are the potential impacts of this project, given this analysis, and to give the decision makers the tools they need to, to make a decision. Next. So the, after the analysis, Meridian consultants and, and city staff and, and we, we looked at it too. Determined that for essentially all of the topics, with the exception of the regulatory consistency issues, which we're gonna solve by updating the zoning code. There's no potentially significant impacts of the build outs on the, kind of the broader, the environment. And, and just to grade, nobody's saying that development doesn't impact, you know, the, the raw land. But you have impact thresholds where you determine whether or not something is significant or it's less than significant. And so all of the topics either found that there's either insignificant impacts or not evidence to suggest that there are potentially significant. In many cases, future projects are going to have to come in and do their own Sequo analysis. And so on a site specific basis, we had not, for example, do an archaeological survey of every single parcel in the city. That's not, you don't, you don't really do them. Every once in a while you hear like a master E I R for a general plan, and then five years later, the jurisdiction will come back and say that was a mistake. But we do this programmatic, high level. And then a project comes in, says, okay, for your, your parcel specific, you still have to go through and look at if it's a discretionary action, subject to Sequo, you're still gonna have to go look at development's impact on your parcel. However, you can use the, the, the city's general plan Sequo clearance, the M N D. And you can, what's called tear off of certain aspects of the analysis. Which means if this is an impact analysis, that's just as, as, as logical at a high level as it is at a parcel specific level. That development doesn't need to do that analysis because it's already been analyzed. We've already found what the, the potential impacts to, to be. So there's a benefit. The city is really helping the public and decision makers be informed and then future developments to be able to streamline future development to a certain degree. But it doesn't mean that nobody has to do Sequo anymore. Everybody's gonna have to do that as required by law. Next slide. There we go. So we did, I mentioned this at the top, we did distribute, when I say we, it's the collective team here. We distributed the M N D for a thirty day public review period as required by law for, for M N Ds, for E I Rs, it's longer. And we got just one letter from the county of San Bernardino saying, well, flooding, storm drainage, let's chat. We said, here's, here's what we think are the issues and the solutions. We don't think you have a problem. And as far as I know, we didn't get anything back saying they have a problem with it. Next. So the, the final M N D was prepared, published online. This was done a, a while ago for that thirty day public review. After the public review, we, we, we published the final M N D on there. And then that's gonna be part of the agenda packet for the, the, the public hearing process. Next. So this is the second last slide, and then we can talk about more questions, but just for everyone, just to hammer it in everyone's head five hundred times, the next city council meeting on the fourteenth will have a study session, much like this, just another opportunity for folks to to come up to speed and ask questions. And then if all continues along this path, planning commission on the fifteenth, if the planning commission makes a decision to move it forward with or without changes, then we would be having the planning committee, the city council public hearing on the twenty eighth.
And then there's a thirty day, if they approve, if we approve and they approve, city council. Then there's, there's another thirty day period in there.
So there's a thirty day appeal period on the Sequo document. I can't remember the exact number of days for the appeal period for the city's decision, maybe it might be thirty days as well. And then, so there's the general plan, and then there's the zoning updates we're doing. We're bringing them to you concurrently. They're all covered by one Sequo document. But the general plan will be, if it's adopted by resolution, to policy level, and that state law says you gotta do general plans by resolution. So that resolution, you just read it once. City council reads it once, then there's the appeal period and you're done. The zoning code has to be updated by ordinance. Ordinances all have to get read, read twice before they go into effect. So you'll have the council hearing, if this schedule stays true, on the twenty eighth. And then you have the next council hearing where, let's say they move it forward, they read it again. And then, and they, they can generally, they can make it take effect immediately, or they can say it takes effect in a certain amount of time. And we don't see any issues where we would warrant, we would see warranting and having it delayed. Sometimes with general plans, you kind of delay the zoning code updates, but these I don't think have any reason to.
They still have to read it twice.
They still have to read it twice. And, and yeah, that's any, any order. So the general plan read once, basically after the twenty eighth. So, you know, the end of March, pending no appeals or, or Sequo issues, and then the, the ordinance trails however much longer it takes for the, I can't remember the March city council dates are, but.
March, March fourteenth.
Okay, so March fourteenth, and then.
That would be the second reading.
That'd be the second reading of the zoning updates, which would include the zoning map. So that's, that's the, that's the one thing to keep clear. We're, we're going to that two map system to one map system. So the, and you can make the general plan, you know, in effect concurrent with the second reading, people, you know, that, that could be a, a recommendation, or that could be a decision of the city council. So that everything kind of goes into effect at once, so that you don't have a general plan in effect, and then the zoning code kind of lagging. So you can make it so that after March fourteenth, everything goes into effect. And then.
What is it generally? How much time is there? When it goes into effect after the final.
Most, most jurisdictions have them go into effect immediately.
Immediately.
Yeah. The only time we ever do something with any sort of delay is if there's a certain part of a city where somebody has already made some investments and you don't want to create confusion because somebody's still operating under the old rules and you still want their processes to kind of flow through without any confusion. And so they say, well, this will take effect in three months or six months.
Yeah, I'm thinking of one in particular that's wanting to break ground immediately. So I'm still waiting for all this to happen.
Yeah, but you can make it take effect immediately.
Can we as the planning commission, Colin, when we make this recommendation to the council, to have the recommendation for it to take immediate action? To go into effect immediately? I mean, they can obviously do what they want, but.
Yes, that can be part of your recommendation.
Was, yeah, into effect immediately.
Yes, I think the default is it does go into effect. You know, after any, yeah, immediately, so.
Yeah, okay. Thank you very much.
The last slide is, what was that, Patrick?
Yeah, Madam Chair, real quick, I just wanna, so if, if it if it gets read the second time and it's approved, we would not hesitate to even begin to start taking in applications for those designated land uses. And so we would encourage any developer that wants to submit their project for any kind of new land use that's being proposed for the general plan to start working on it now so that once, once it is adopted, we wouldn't be able to, depending on the council's action, to take effect immediately. The worst case scenario is that it'd be a thirty day delay with the ordinance being read. And so, but if it is your recommendation to do it immediately, that's, that's up to the planning commission on how it moves forward. But just, I want everybody to know that we would not discourage an applicant to submit their application to wait for this to, to be, you know, for that thirty day period. So I want everybody to know that we want, we'd want to move forward development ASAP.
Correct. Okay, perfect. Okay, are there any questions for staff or Colin from the commission?
This is Will Bosboom. I have a question, if I may, Madam Chair.
Sure, go ahead.
I'd like to ask the gentleman. Regarding the underpass at K, along K Street. Right now you have two options there. If this general plan passes, does that mean the decision on which option to take with that, whether it be pedestrian only or mixed use with vehicles empties, is that something that can be decided at a later date? It's not gonna, it, it's gonna leave the option open when this general.
Yeah, we intentionally provided two options because we know that may be something the city wants to take a little bit more time with.
Right. Okay, that's good. Thank you for that.
Yeah, I have a question too, because you were saying that you were encouraging all the truck traffic, of course, to stay on interstate, which we have now and when we try to keep out of residential, but there isn't a plan for trucks to pull off or stop or is that something that could be part of the general plan that we should be looking at?
Yeah, you could have anything from a, a policy on what direction you want to give about trucks pulling off or rests. You know, if you're having parking issues where trucks are pulling off to try and rest and they're going into residential neighborhoods and you want to identify areas where that's something that could be encouraged. We can definitely augment the, the draft document with that. It can be an implementation action where you direct staff to go look at solutions for where trucks could be best located and how you can facilitate or discourage trucks from, from going into certain areas. So yeah, we, I, I don't know if I've seen on a if, if it's, if it's a, a big issue and you have an area of the city where you really want to encourage, let's say a, a truck rest stop. Then we could look at the map and see whether or not there's, there's areas that are appropriately proposed for the right zoning. And then if you really wanted to encourage trucks to go into certain areas, then we could have a policy directing that.
Okay, thank you.
I've got a question. Madam Chair, I've got a question, Michael Wright.
Yeah, go ahead.
In the older part of town, and you may be able to find this out by the links that you've said exist, but in the older part of town down on Walnut, I think Market, you know, there's some what used to be small neighborhood, little businesses, right? And are those little businesses still gonna be zoned, like have a little square patch of commercial amongst residential? And specifically, there's a house on Walnut, almost K Street that the owner wasn't able to, to sell as a house in real estate because it was considered a business and that kind of threw things. And I wondered if, if the change or if there's any change that that affects those people.
Oh. Getting a technical support here. Okay, so if you could be so kind as to redirect me to the area that you're talking about. Are you talking about basically, is it, is it in the kind of the downtown area or is it?
It's on the other side of the.
Other, north of the railroad tracks?
Yes.
Okay.
So North Cave Street and Walnut.
Okay.
And at one time it was somebody added what was like an antique shop up against a house.
Oh, yeah, okay.
So then it became a business.
Right, right.
And the seller had a hard time selling it as a house because it was considered a business. I just wondered if any of those kinds of things are addressed, or is that too specific?
Um, the answer, not necessarily for that part. In general, we did try to consider that when we're looking at the zoning, if, if I understand where you're, exactly where you're looking correctly. What was the current? Okay, so it's, it looks like it was, what was the general? Okay, so it looks like the general plan and zoning both said, hey, this is a residential area.
Yeah.
So, and that's something people can definitely identify. If there's a specific parcel where it says, hey, this is really kind of a business and this corner may be fine as a commercial use, even though when we looked at it, we said, oh, this looks like a residential area. General plan and zoning both agree. Yeah, and people might be, people might be operating businesses out of what look like residential structures. Maybe we missed something. So you can definitely identify any parcels that you're concerned with and see, to, I think, answer your question. If there's a residential neighborhood and you say, hey, there's a corner parcel. And I'll go with corner parcels first. There's a corner parcel and it's really a, a shop or it's really a business. In general, there's, there's not a problem. We might go with something like a neighborhood commercial so that we don't allow something more intense in the given area. If it's mid-block, you know, if it's, if you've got a street and it's not on the corners, commercial generally doesn't like to go on, on retail.
Right. Right.
If it's office space, that can be a different story. So, um, and, and as a, again, I, in general, we didn't see any businesses, but we might have missed some that maybe are an issue.
Yeah, and it's not a currently running business.
Oh, okay.
It's just a vacant, big vacant room attached to the house.
Yes.
For people, they couldn't sell it as a house.
Yeah, yeah.
And I just wondered if.
Is that the same street that Valenzuela's on, on the other?
Valenzuela's is the other property I'm thinking of, but it's on Chestnut, Chestnut and, um, M Street, I believe. And, um, you know.
Okay, yeah, the, um, the one on basically northeast M Street.
Yeah.
And, uh, Chestnuts is being proposed for neighborhood commercial.
Okay.
Yeah. So, so you can see like we have a, a parcel that's at a corner.
Okay. So that still works there.
That still works there.
They're okay there.
Yeah, they're, they're okay there. And, um, in general, so number one, this is a study session. People can, you know, and even after the study session, leading up to the, the, the public hearing, people can suggest, hey, these are my thoughts on my parcel. It can come from commission. It can come from anyone. Um, and it's, it really all the way through the city council public hearing. And even at the city council, so in, in general plans and zoning changes, we will go up with, here's 99.9%, we're sure everything is gonna get approved. And the council says, hey, I want to change that one, that one and that one. And then we, we do have to make sure that there's no sequoia implications that was alluded to before. General little tiny changes aren't gonna be a problem. So there's room for change all the way up and through and not to trivialize it, but their colors on a map, they, but they mean a whole lot and we want to get it right.
Yes.
Um, and in, and in general, the sequel, I think will support small kind of nuanced changes here and there.
Okay.
Yeah.
So the other thing that I noticed a couple of slides back, you, you did have K Street identified as, um, where you don't want to allow big rigs.
Right.
And I think that's great. Um, however, 24 hours a day, there are really heavy trucks coming and going from BNSF.
Yeah.
On that street. And I wondered if there's been any thought to have them use River Road or is there any alternative? Um, because I was so glad we were at one, you know, K Street was one of the first streets that was repaved and looks great and everything. And then these big, heavy trucks from BNSF up and down 24/7. I just thought, man, it's probably not gonna last too long, you know?
Yeah, it, it, yeah, depending on how the road was, the, the, the kind of weight capacity it was designed for. I, I think what that speaks to is a potential implementation action to try and coordinate with BNSF.
Right.
There's, so the railroads are a whole nother different level of entity.
Yeah.
But even if they weren't, um, there's, there's some federal and state law that says, if you have, let's say you have a business that needs a truck to deliver to it and you say, oh, that's not truck route, you, you cannot deny them.
Okay.
Service on there. I don't know if K Street functions that way, but again, railroads are a whole different type of entity. But I think it would speak to the need to coordinate with them more to try and see if they could use a, a different route so that we could, you know.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay.
Thanks.
Okay. Any other questions?
I have two small questions, Madam Chair. It's Barbara.
Okay, go ahead, Barbara.
Uh, when we're talking about lot mergers, uh, what is the difference between that and a variance?
So.
Type wise especially.
I cannot speak at the time. I'll just tell you the, the basic subject difference. The lot merger will just physically change where the ownership start and stops for, or the, the parcel boundaries, uh, start and stop. Um, and then that will determine, uh, ultimately with a project is proposed, you know, what can go on there. Um, and then a variance is you're not changing necessarily anything about the property lines. But you have a development standard or requirement and the city is allowing for a proposed applicant to not meet that standard or not be consistent.
A land, say, but you have what?
The var, the variance, the, are you?
No, you said, um, you're, you're merging boundaries with the merger.
Yeah.
Merging boundaries, but with a variance, you're not.
You're, you're not changing anything about the property line.
Right, but you're what?
Uh, but what you're doing is you are allowing a proposed applicant to vary from the, from the city's current requirements.
So you.
So use, it can be a use variance or it can be, uh, uh, kind of a metric of like parking, parking variance, or it can be, like, you don't, you don't have really onerous development standards, so I don't think a lot of variances are required. But, uh, parking's a, a classic example where you say, well, I don't have the physical lot size needed to, I'm 0.5 parking spaces short. Can you give me a variance? And, you know, some are bigger than others. Some are a variance that are pretty big.
Okay, so it shouldn't, never mind, I won't. Forget the hypotheticals. There could be a thousand.
Okay.
And, um, second question, and then I'm finished. There are 17,800 acres of open space land and that is not what we're addressing here, correct?
Um, you know, I used to know the exact, there's a city, there's a city proper boundaries. And that's what we are addressing directly in the land use element. Although we do have a note that the city has the unincorporated area around it that a state agency says, if development's gonna go here, Needles is the most likely provider of services and that encompasses your entire sphere of influence, it's called.
Okay.
And so you, people oftentimes say just the unincorporated area is a sphere of influence. It's actually the city's boundaries and your unincorporated area. But, um, in your city boundaries, we say, here is the land use and here is what controls on those parcels. Outside of those boundaries, the city defers to the County of San Bernardino on permitted uses and regulations.
There is open space. I think.
Oh, yeah. So within, okay, so within, well, uh, okay, so on that map, so you're, you're pointing to the land use map exhibit two.
It's open space down here, the last one.
So yes, so the green, kind of the greenish color is open space. So we've got the airport in the very south and we said, okay, that's not really open space. We want to continue to reflect kind of the, the logical use around the airport. And then open space, we really said, if it's privately owned, we don't want to do a taking. We don't want to reduce someone's property value to zero by saying this is open space. And so if it's private, then we didn't call it open space. If it's federal, state, public, and there's not gonna be a takings issue, then we kept it open space so that the city limits the amount of development that could happen there without somebody coming in and having to ask for permission. The federal government, number one, doesn't care what the city says about its land use. By and large, it'll do what it wants. It's not subject to local land use law. State, kind of the same thing. They all, you know, will cooperate as needed. We don't see a lot of development pressure going on out there. Um, there's not a huge amount of mining activity around there. Uh, so in general, we said, okay, in the outlying areas from the kind of the urban core of the city, which is most of the developed areas, um, we're gonna say it's open space. If it's publicly owned, it's kind of the industrial use around the airport and then it's single family in general or commercial if it's, uh, privately owned.
Thank you.
Okay. Very good. Thank you, Colin. Appreciate the discussion. Any other questions? If not, we'll move to the board requests. And Michael, we'll start with you.
I have none. Thank you.
Okay, Barbara?
None. Thank you. I'm just thrilled to death with this whole project.
Yeah, it's great, isn't it, to move forward for sure. Long time coming. Charles?
I have.
Board request? None? Will?
Uh, no request for me either.
Okay, thanks. Um.
I think we have, we may have public comment here in the audience.
Thank you. Once I hear it. Am I the only one? You wanna go first?
Be delighted.
Okay, but should we get up here? Right?
Hmm, I don't, I didn't have public comment listed on here. I'm sorry.
It's not on the agenda.
Not?
It's just hearing.
No, because this is just a discussion item, so.
Discussion item?
Yeah.
We specifically asked that at the beginning.
Did have public appearance prior to this and I.
Madam Chair.
It's on the agenda.
If, um, hi, if, uh, because this is a study session, we could, we should, uh, we could take information from the public to get their ideas so that that way when this does come in front of the public hearing, uh, it's solidified and it'll be, uh, more or less a slam dunk. And so if you just wanna just hear them, uh, in terms of.
I don't have a problem with it. I was just going by the agenda and it was just a discussion item.
Well, we'll, we'll correct that. I apologize. That's.
All right. So then, shall I open it as a public, as a open, uh, public hearing and then?
No, ma'am.
Or just a comment?
Public comments.
So, um, yes, if, is there some, yeah, someone there? If you would list your name and address and go ahead, please.
Hi, my name is Honey Davis and I have, uh, I'm one of the 170 people you spoke of, uh, who, uh, one of the 5% uh, who has, uh, open land that is affected by the general plan and the zoning. And, uh, this is a beautiful tract of land, which is, it starts at Airport Wash. And I think maybe everyone knows where that is, about two and a half miles south of where DMV was. And it runs a 500 foot strip. It runs to a point 700 feet from the river. And I have a great vision for this property. It's quite beautiful. I've been there. And I have found on it an old gas can. It's probably somebody ran out of gas about a hundred years ago. So at, at any rate, I, my vision for it, it, it is a wash. And I would respect the, the river that runs down the middle of it. And, uh, I, I built in a wash before. I have a place in Golden Shores that I did very well with respecting the wash like that. But I, I would like to do great things with this, including, uh, some sort of public space, uh, perhaps a tea house, a bakery. And, uh, also I would like to do solar, elevated solar, which is the new thing. It provides shade and that would be a great addition to public space, including perhaps even live music out there since there's no one to disturb. Uh, unless you put something out there that, but that would be many years down the road. So, uh, I, uh, I pray to this body that, uh, they understand my vision and, uh, 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 allow me to, uh, to do these things. Uh, solar power is an, a present day necessity and with electric cars, the appetite will be inexhaustible. And certainly people would love a, a green place to charge their Tesla on the way to wherever they're going. And, uh, this would provide some of that power and at the same time shade. And with shade, many things can be done, which cannot be done without it. I thank you.
Thank you very much.
One comment though, uh, I would live up to the most stringent requirements uh, about environmental hazards because there's a river right there. And, uh, I hope that whatever is put near the river, it, you know, plating shops, auto repair. There are better places to do that. And, uh, I, I hope that the, uh, whatever requirements would be put in would be to protect the river. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Hi, Ms. Musser Lopez. Uh, I'm a Needles resident. I have been here over 40 years now. And, uh, uh, I just want to thank you, uh, the planning commission, because I, I'm really impressed by your, your caringness. Uh, I don't want to use up all my three minutes though. But I think that my saying, talking up here is not gonna fall on deaf ears. I really appreciate that. Except maybe one person. But, um, anyway, uh, okay, I think there might've been a little bit of an oversight. I, I really don't think that you, you've intended this to happen, but maybe somebody can clarify that if it was intended. We have this historic, I mean, really historic, uh, cemetery, graveyard. And it's, it's turn of the century, but it's not turn of this century. I mean, I'm talking about 18, late 1800s. And it, it actually is one of the most, it is probably the most significant historic thing that we have in our town. It's older than Delgarce's. And it is actually the statement of the value, uh, the importance of our town. It, it documents the age of this town, how old it is, one of the oldest in California. And it, it truly is not just, uh, belong on the state historic, uh, list of, of historic places, but it should be on a national historic list, list of historic places. And I will tell you why. Um, and I hope, I, 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 it'll take a little bit for me to tell you that. So I'm gonna request something first. Uh, so I won't use up all my three minutes. Um, that you take it off of the, uh, color for, don't zone it for, um, residential, which it is right now in this proposal. Uh, it wasn't zoned before for that. And you put it on, uh, I think as a public use is for, um, is what you have public use land. It's owned by the, it's, it's on city property now. I think it's city owned. Um, and I think the city picked up the land right next to it in the wash at the end of Downey. Cause that was private. And I would request that you put that property into pu, oh, public open space that down below there on, off of Downey because we don't have any open space in that congested area down there where all these people live. You know where I'm talking about D Street, Tacoma, um, and so on, that area, there's, there's nothing where people can have open space. And this, now see, I would like to tell you why that's the importance of that cemetery. I knew I wouldn't get into it, but, um, people do use that, that, uh, little open space there at the bottom. And we have many visitors and there'll be more visitors there after we get the museum open, uh, which we have that house that Doc and Judy Penberthy lived in that we're, we've proposed. We have a nonprofit now. We already have funding towards that purchase. And we hope to put, make that the gateway to the cemetery, working with the city. It, it's gonna, this is big. It's gonna bring, even, people love these historic cemeteries. It's gonna, it's gonna bring even more people. It has to do with the rock art. The last Mojave Indian chief, the last one, they named him Pete Lambert. That's not his real name. It's in oral history, liter, and there is archaeological evidence that he actually made some of those tombstones. And using the technique of rock art, this has been, this has been discussed on a national and statewide level at this, at the Society for California Archaeology and the Society for American Archaeology. There's a lot of people interested in that, um, cemetery. So I hope that this body, this really awesome body of, of neighbors of mine will just take that off because it is, it is not gonna be a, a mitigated negative declaration if you don't. You can't leave this under sequoia because it's, there's gonna be impact to a national historic preservation, national historic site. It's eligible. Thank you so much.
You have the speaker chair.
Okay.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair, planning commission. I just want to applaud the city staff, planning, zoning commission, uh, for this general plan of, we're, we're right there. We're, we're at the goal line, long overdue. I just had a couple of concerns and a couple, uh, mentions here. Um, I am concerned about the possibility of two uses of the closure of the underpass. Being, you know, we've three years in negotiations with the railroad to get it to where we're at now. It's almost opening. So I think it's important that we don't further delay anything by having two proposals there. I think the number one proposal should be for vehicle use because we all know how it's needed. I agree with Will on that. The second is, um, I appreciate the city and this consultant respecting the area adjacent to the Fort Mojave Indian Tribe. As I work one, as one of their consultants, changing the zoning adjacent from, uh, commercial down there and some of them to residential. And then I guess it's called forthcoming because they're actually own the commercial land down there now. So respecting that is huge and they are, give their applause to that. And thank you for that. Thanks.
So thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Any other public comment? If not, we will move on. Is there a city manager report or shall we leave that for the next? If not, we will move on. Is there a city manager reporter? Shall we leave that for the next meeting?
Uh, not, not, not tonight, ma'am. We are, we, uh, we send our best wishes. We are at the mayor, new mayor and city council conference.
Okay, very good. If not, I would ask for a, a motion to adjourn, please.
Oh, can you adjourn?
Second?
Oh, second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Hi.
Motion adjourned or meeting adjourned. Thank you, Patrick and everyone.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Colin.